Meeting of the zoning board of appeals, go ahead and call the row when you're ready.
Dino Ori.
Here.
Belinda Young.
Here.
Ed Zoski.
Yeah.
Mike McCarthy.
Here.
Gina Driscoll.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, I need a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting in December 9th. Ed?
Second.
I vote.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. What carries?
Okay, case 20 PUD 1, petition of Yvonne Kooks to modify the existing planned unit development plans for 115 Arnold Avenue, PIN 1134 202011. You're Yvonne?
I'm Yvonne Kooks.
Did I pronounce your last name right, or close enough?
Close enough.
Okay, yeah, why don't you give us your address?
1213 North Elmwood Avenue, Peoria.
1213 what?
North Elmwood Avenue.
Oh Elmwood, okay, by Bradley.
Yes.
Okay, and go ahead and tell us what you plan on doing.
Okay, I am currently under contract for the purchase of 115 Arnold Road with the sale contingent upon the zoning approval. My planned use for this property is to start a dog grooming business. It would be grooming only, no boarding, no doggy daycare. The modifications on the inside, there's three rooms in the building. There's two front rooms, the back room is a really nice sized workshop. It wasn't exist, it was previously an art gallery and art workshop. The workshop in the rear of the building is, I just see the potential for a grooming facility. I would need to go in and hire a carpenter to separate, build a wall to separate the wet room from the grooming area, which is essential, so that would involve some plumbing and electrical work. As far as the front room, I see the potential for small retail, treats, toys, some accessories. I would work on that, I would kind of ease on that later on, but I do have the space available for that, so. So that's pretty much for the inside of the building. As far as the outside, the parking, I'm hoping that the parking is adequate because it is just a driveway. There's, at the entrance of the driveway, there's enough, it's wide enough to park two cars side by side. I'm hoping that that will be adequate for the nature of my business. People just come in and, you know, they drop off and pick up dogs, they're only parked for a few minutes. I mean, some people do like to stay and chat for a while, but other than that. So, in the future, if I feel neat with the growth of business, if I feel necessary to add parking, I did talk to Rick Samonsky last month, he did come by the property to look, and it would be possible to pave the front yard to add two additional parking spots, because I don't want parking to be problematic for my clients or deter my business, so. The sign would be in the front yard, aluminum sign with post. It would be in the front yard, and in the event, in the future, I would need to expand parking, then I would have the aluminum sign attached to the building. Other than that, as far as the outside, I, there's a nice sized backyard, I would like that fenced in, I think that'd be beneficial for the business and the neighbors. Other than that, I did speak with both neighbors on each side, very nice ladies, and I seem to have their blessing, they seem to not have any objections to having a dog grooming business next door to them.
Do you have estimate on number of customers you'd have per day, or?
I, it, I'm not currently a business owner, I have 20 years' experience, so this is, I'm excited to branch out on my own. So, being a brand-new business, it will probably take a little while to take off, so I'm, I would be happy just with, you know, five or six dogs a day. You know, I would hope it would grow in the future, you know, if I could get one more employee and enough work for just the two of us, that would make me happy. I don't want a high-volume grooming shop, I don't. Been there, done that, it's all chaotic, so I would be happy with 10 to 12 dogs, you know, with one other employee, and that would be.
Yeah, I would think parking would be the major problem.
Yes, yes.
Belinda, any questions? Start with you.
I don't think she's answered them.
All right, Ed.
No, I guess I just, how about Mike?
Michael?
I do have a couple of questions.
Okay.
Your sales contingent on the approval of zoning.
Yes.
Are you looking, is it contingent on the dog grooming approval, or is it a contingent on the antique shop, travel agent, insurance agent, doctor's office, all of that?
The zoning approval, the zoning approval.
Okay, for the dog grooming specifically.
For the dog grooming business, correct.
Okay. You answered the question on parking requirements, and you answered my other question with single use. Do you anticipate a combination of uses in here, or is it all going to be dog grooming?
The only...
Aside from the retail you mentioned?
That, just retail and grooming.
Okay, all right, that's it, thank you. No questions.
Thank you.
Gina?
Thank you, yes, I have questions. I realize you're just starting this business, but do you have any envision of what your hours of operation would be?
I plan to be open Tuesday through Saturday, 8:00 AM till 3:00 or 4:00. Okay.
Any lights planned for the sign?
No.
Okay. I guess my philosophy on that would be, because you're still in a residential area, that there not be a bright light on something that would be distracting to the neighbors or people driving by.
Sure.
Would prefer business to end, and you're ending well before I imagined it, I just thought, having customers in and out at, you know, 7, 8 o'clock at night is probably, I wouldn't want to live next to it, I guess, would be my point. And then, paving the front yard, I had no problem with, if you need more parking, definitely not paving the backyard and putting more parking back there.
No.
So, I think we are in sync.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Does anyone like to speak for or against the petitioner? Hearing none, we'll move to the next case. Which is case 20 SU 2, petition of Roy Source of Source Enterprises for special use to allow for the operation of adult-use cannabis infusion operation located at 3201 North Main Street, PIN 1123 100018. And we're also going to hear case 20 SU-3, petition of Roy Source of Source Enterprises for special use to allow for the operation of adult-use cannabis craft growing operation located at the same address and the same PIN number. Is Roy here? Just step right up there. Give us your name and address, please.
My name is Roy Source, my work address is 3201 North Main Street, East Peoria. My home address is 12203 Hickory Grove Road in Dunlap, Illinois.
I need this, Roy, and just raise your right hand, so I can swear the truth holds you saw, if we got.
I do.
Thank you, and go ahead and tell us what's going on.
I appreciate the meeting with me today to discuss my request for a crafting, a craft grower processor and infuser license. The state classifies crafter and processor in the same, that's why I'm letting you know that, so. If you're approved for the one, you're approved for the other one also. We are a third-generation food service company located in East Peoria, Illinois, for more than 40 years. We're approaching our 50th year in October of 2021. We currently employ over 20 diverse individuals, many of whom have been with us for five, 10, 15, 20-plus years, at a very competitive wage and benefit scale. I'm 60 years old, and I'm looking to start the process of stepping away from my current business. However, the company cannot survive financially or operation without my presence. Unfortunately, I see our businesses in jeopardy, not becoming another statistic, just like, just due to the local, regional, and national driver shortage that has plagued everyone in the country. The shortage is very severe and hinders our ability to grow and prosper, as many of our employees can attest to, and I'm trying to avoid further job loss and/or relocation from our area with, like what happened to Wa Foods, where those jobs moved out of the area. I want to create an opportunity that will benefit my employees, my children, and the city of East Peoria. I request that for my building, I will both maintain and increase jobs and wages for existing and potentially new employees. I realize this requires a lot of discussion, however, due to the state's timeframe, meaning that the application has to be turned in by March, and I have to start the process now to be able to do that, okay? I'm hoping for a quick resolution of the problem, and I'll make myself available on short notice if need be. I am requesting the city allows me to operate a secured and monitored non-public access facility for the purpose of crafting and infusing, which would include processing as far as the state's concerned, with our current building at 3201 North Main Street. I also have long-term goals for making the company more sustainable, using solar panels, as we, and possibly rainwater if the state allows it, and recycling as much as possible to increase our carbon footprint and further positively impacting the city. Right now, being a food service distributor in the country, we burn a lot of diesel fuel, we use a lot of electricity in our freezers and coolers. We have always been a very low-visibility company, and don't plan to change this. We don't have to plan to put a big sign up and say, "This is what we're doing." I don't think a lot of people know what we do, or have heard of us very much, okay? We intend to invest and donate a percentage of profits back to the community, meaning Forty years ago, the city was asking companies to move into our area, which is the M1 Enterprise Zone. Back then, it was the undesirable area to be, if you remember that far back. Since then, we've paid over a million dollars in property taxes, and now I'm asking the board and elected officials to support my local business with your approval recommendation for the state, because I need that to provide the application to the state. It needs to be approved by the city. I've been told, don't know this for fact, but I've been told there are other applicants being put in, there aren't any right now, I understand that, that would not be from this area. I have a vested interest in this area, other companies that come in do not, they're out of state, they lease buildings, they have no ties to here. I'm not asking to amend the regulation, okay? I'm only asking to interpret it as what the regulation was intended to do. Most important is public safety. Second would be public acceptance, and then public support. I've gone to every building on my side of the street, which is 1,000 feet in both directions, they've all signed off, and are aware of what we're doing. None of them have any problems with it, all their phone numbers are on there to call if you'd like. We're asking that you simply look at the building limit as a safe and legal walking distance. The reason being is that Rogies is across the street from us. They are 692 feet from corner of building to corner of building, not main entrance, not, I want to call it, to the last part of the building, just the front corner of my building to the front corner of their building. The regulation states building to building, they don't specify whether it's entrance to entrance, farthest part of your building, doesn't say closest part, it just says building to building. I'm asking that East Peoria allows me to at least the opportunity to submit my application, because without your approval, I can't. It's, it's, they don't accept that. So, I was presenting a couple of different options for the zoning board. I can present them now, or you can ask questions if you'd like. I have people here to help answer those questions if I can't. Anyone have questions?
Are you, you're applying, I suppose, for two separate licenses, right?
Yes, the state requires.
What are your odds of getting both, or are you trying, hoping to get one, or are you hoping to get both?
I'm hoping to get both, I mean, we have the ability to do that, okay? We've hired a company to help us with those applications. We're not trying to do this on our own, because they're very complicated, to say the least. They're only giving out 40 applications in the whole state. My contention is, I would like to see East Peoria benefit from that, I would like to see my employees benefit from that, and why not here? I'm not, I'm 60 years old, it's not what I grew up to be, was a cannabis infuser and producer and grower. I, looking at the opportunity as something to...
Yeah, you're looking to do this, oh, at the rear end of the property, are you looking to separate part of that, or is it possible, I noticed there is a wall, there's a wall between the buildings, is that possible to separate?
Yes, I can separate the building, what I'm asking for is a little different than that, okay? First, the first ask is that if you use a legal and safe walking distance from Rogies to our facility, it's 1.2 miles. These are one- and three-year-olds, and they have signed off on it also.
I agree with you, you actually got eight lanes of traffic between you and them.
And three, and three lanes of dishes. So, and these are one- to three-year-olds we're talking about, okay? So, what I'm asking is that if you measure by legal walking distance, I'm 1.2 miles away. As the crow flies, I'm 692 feet. So I'm asking that you use that measurement, okay, or even a measurement of entrance to entrance, I would be willing to relocate my entrance, because it is a non-public use facility, okay, to in the back of the building, where there's no opportunity for someone to come in and, you know, go through the building and get in there any other way. I'd be willing to do that, okay?
So what's the difference from Rogies to the back of the building?
It's to the, if you have a picture of my building there, do you have one? Okay, you'll see a smaller part of the building, okay? That's, that's in the back corner of the building, okay? That, where that little indentation is, that little separate building that you can see there, that's 872 feet, as the crow flies, okay? If I just differentiate, if I just take that off, that still gives me enough space to do that type of operation. Where it's 1,000 feet is that back far corner, and I would have to differentiate, I'd have to disconnect the building, which is doable, they were all put together separately, there's four different freezers there. They're all, they're like a, an adult Lego system, they use cam locks, they take it apart, put them there, you can reconstruct it any way you want. So, worst-case scenario, yes, I can disconnect that part of the building, make it separate, okay? I have the ability to expand and add on 2,000 to 3,000 square feet, that would suffice, but I have a whole large building in front that I'd much rather use and not have to go through that expense if the city could see fit to that, the zoning board. I know the regulation, I see it.
Sounds like it needs a variance of some type to write.
If one were offered, variances defined, there's very specific variances that are permitted by code, and this is not an eligible distance to vary.
Well, in addition, if I ask for a variance and I get denied, I can't ask for it on my later on, so I didn't ask for that specifically, I just asked for the ability to either use the measurement, if the state doesn't specify any measurement, I actually comply with the state regulations. They refer to or defer to the city regulations, and the city regulations are 1,000 feet, building to building. Their regulation does not specify how that measurement is taken from building to building, from the farthest point of the building to the closest point, doesn't differentiate entrance to entrance.
So have you looked at any other locations to do this?
Well, considering I own this location, my employees are here, you know, I do have that option, but I own the building, and my employees are currently here, it makes more economic sense to do that.
Yeah, I don't know how you're going to get by the 1,000-foot though.
I don't unless you, as a committee, decide that that's workable. If not, I have the ability to differentiate that 2,000 feet, separate it from my current building, it could be a different address, no different what Caterpillar does, and there are, you know, different buildings out there, and I can do the operation there. And then I'm 1,000 feet away.
You would be 1,000 feet away.
I'd be 1,000 feet away, yes. That's, that back corner is in your diagram there. I'm asking for, obviously, something different.
Yeah, the city's probably not going to let you do that, but if you get back to 1,000-foot, then you'd...
At 1,000-foot, I'm in compliance.
But then, you're adding quite an expense to your project, I would assume.
To disconnect where the 1,000-foot is, is not near as expensive as it would be to construct additional 3,000 feet, you know? I have, there's, there's, those panels are movable, so I could take the first 3,000 feet in front of there, move it to the back of the building, so. It's economically feasible.
Okay, so we don't have to change.
So if we approve something, doing it that way, that would get you by for now?
That would get me by for now, I'd obviously appreciate the other, if at all possible. I mean, my, my ask is that I would even accept a conditional acceptance of my entire building, or just that back corner of the, where it's 885 feet or 825 feet, in that if no one else applies, that's a legitimate application, has a building, and is willing to, you know, put forth the effort type thing, it's only open for a couple more months, the application process. If no one else applies, you're not granting a blanket-wide variance, you're not granting a blanket-wide determination, you're just saying, "In this situation, I see your point," and if you accept that, that gives me the ability to do, to spend less money to make this happen, and at that point, if not, if they come back and other applicants come in, which there aren't right now, and they want, and they're, you know, and you don't have a problem with that, I can do that, I would accept a conditional acceptance.
Questions, Gina, start your end.
Turn your mic.
I'm not so sure I actually have any questions for you. I came into the meeting not quite understanding the difference between a craft grower and a cultivation center, so, glad I had a little conversation before the meeting to understand that. It does look like our ordinance grants, it says, "No more than one adult-use cannabis craft grower shall be granted," and so on, so I guess you would be our, could be, our one and only. Because it's in the ordinance, I don't know that my personal opinion about any of this matters, but I feel like the 1,000 feet is kind of a showstopper. With, having attended some city council meetings and some of the previous conversation that the ZBA has had on how we're going to measure the distance from one thing to another, whether it be property line, building, or whatever, I'm not, not real comfortable with the 692 or 800 and some feet. Just my opinion, but I don't really have any questions, thanks, Dean.
How about Michael?
Not a question, but a comment, and this is more to my associates here on the board. When we talked about the distances, we talked about the opportunity for somebody to come in in the middle of a retail center, and how do we measure it? And this is what we're looking at, and it was ambiguous then, and it's ambiguous now. But if this gentleman can get to a point where it's 1,000 feet to his entrance, I'd be inclined to support it.
I agree with Michael, I was thinking the same thing, see how we can change it.
Belinda, go ahead.
Yeah, I was thinking the same thing, we did have this conversation, and it would have been nice if we would have had something in place at that time. You said it would be a secured building. Would you have security there, how would you?
The state requires it, and we would definitely have security there, 24/7.
24/7.
Yes, and not in, that's physical presence, we're always, we have to be monitored 24/7 also, with cameras and security system, and key cards and things like that, it's a very, very stringent program, how's that?
Okay, all right, I also wouldn't be inclined to go with it if you could put the entrance within that 1,000 feet.
All right, thank you.
Okay, can I, can I ask a couple of questions?
Sure.
Because of the timeframe, I don't want to be excluded, because I'm not sure how the elected officials, the committee's going to feel, I mean, I realize you're the recommendation, and they're the ones that vote yes or no.
You know what the next, or the next council meeting?
Right, but I, I would like to not be excluded, I appreciate you voting yes in my favor, and I really do appreciate that. I just want to make sure that if it, if the committee shoots me down, am I still able to do the 2,000-foot, which meets that criteria, do I have to go through another hearing, I guess what I'm asking?
2,000-foot, you're talking about 1,000?
Well, no, I'm saying the 2,000-foot piece that does fit in the back there, in other words, I wonder if it's 1,000 feet.
Yeah, if you can move it back to where you meet the 1,000-foot requirement.
Correct, I don't want to have, I don't mind with another hearing, I don't mind, I don't mind coming back, I'm just saying, if, if they don't, if they shoot me down, am I, are you still approving me for the back part of my building for 2,000 feet?
You want to make sure that you can expand the facility to accommodate future growth needs?
Well, I get, no, I guess what I'm asking is I want to make sure, because I, I feel I have three people that would be willing to, maybe four, be willing to vote in my favor, or recommend in my favor. Yeah, we're going to do that a little bit later. Right, I said, assume I didn't, okay? But I'm asking that if the committee shoots me down, or says, "No, I'm not going to go with your recommendation," the council members, that I'm not stuck with coming back again and asking for that same 2,000-foot.
If you could stay 1,000-foot away, I don't think there's going to be any problems.
Okay.
That's the whole thing.
So you're going to, you're going to look at the entrance part and recommend that, possibly, and if not, it'll revert back to the original?
That's what they would do.
Yeah, we can, we're working on, yeah, get near the special use, if you stay 1,000 feet away from my, from the children, which is really kind of a moot point, since they're, as far as I'm concerned, there are eight lanes of traffic away, but, but yeah, the law's a law, so.
Right, okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone that wants to speak on behalf of the petitioner, or against him? Good, if not, we'll move on to the next one. Case 20 SU 4, petition of Keith McGinnis of New Med for special use to allow for the operation of adult cannabis dispensary located at 504 Riverside Drive, 101129 406009. Keith is here, and you're already in operation, raise your right hand, so I can swear the truth, tell him, shoot the whole truth out the guy.
I do.
And name and address, please.
Keith McGinnis. Home address, 2951 East 1489th Road, Ottawa, Illinois, 61350. Thank you, members of the board, for allowing NewMed to appear before you this evening for a special use permit. As I'm hoping, most of you already know, NewMed has been in operation for a little over three years now, over 504 Riverside, as a medical cannabis dispensary. And most recently, January 1 of this year, 2020, along with the state, we were giving an adult-use license as well to operate, to sell to anyone that comes in, 21 years or over. Some of the caveats in the whole thing is, we're a medical and an adult-use at the same time, same operation. What we must do as a purveyor of medical, we must have allocation of enough product on a monthly, a little more than a monthly basis, to make sure that our medical patients get served first. Anything after that from a, what we have from a supply, we can then use for adult-use cannabis. We've had a great working relationship with the city of East Peoria since we've been there. We have neighbors. We started out, at times, a little rocky with parking issues, where we were having people come over from a local place and parking in our spots. Since then, we've really worked out real well with secure dental next to us, Rogies, and we've been able to share a good-sized parking lot right there at 504 Riverside. So, at this, at this time, I'm just asking that we allow the adult-use cannabis to continue with the city of East Peoria and pay, hopefully the city of East Peoria gets your first check around June or July at 3% on a tax. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have. Excuse me. We have no structural changes, nothing to the building itself that we had to do to go to the adult-use side of it. We have added full-time security the whole time in operation, and at all other times, we are on camera, directly tied into the state for supervision.
Okay. Sounds like you've been doing well. Supplies a problem?
We haven't had any problems, and I think it's worked out well. We haven't, we haven't had any disgruntled neighbors, one way or another. And I think it's been accepted, it's been accepted well, pretty much, on a statewide level.
Start with you. Ed, questions?
No, it sounds like you're doing a good job.
It sounds like you're doing a good job, and I don't think there's any questions.
Go ahead.
I have no questions.
Gina?
No questions, thank you.
Michael?
No questions.
Okay, looks like you're good to go.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody want to speak for or against the petitioner? Hearing none, we'll move on to the next. Last case, 20 SU5, petition of Dave Horton of Dave's Garage for special use to allow for the outdoor display and sale of vehicles, trailers, and automotive repair business at 727 South Main. That pin is 1132409001 and 555105030. Dave's here.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, just raise your right hand, Dave. Tell the truth, tell the truth, tell the truth, tell the guy.
As I do.
Okay. Full name and address?
My name's Dave Horton. My address is 229 Matheny Road, East Peoria. My business address is 2408 North Knoxville in Peoria. And what I'm doing is I'm closing my business down in Peoria, and I'm wanting to come to East Peoria and operate my business out of 727 operation.
Okay. I know we've had this business, came through here a few years ago. The parking, I think, is gonna be the problem. You're wanting, how many spots there?
I think I put 45 or 35 down there?
35.
Yeah, you got 29 shown on the drawing.
I'm not real sure. I'm just saying, I'm a small dealer, and it's a lot, lot larger operation or a lot larger area that I'm used to selling used cars off of, okay?
So, what are you gonna be doing? You're gonna be working on vehicles?
Yep, we'll be working on them and selling them.
And how many employees are you gonna have?
Two.
Two, including yourself, or two?
Right, two plus myself.
And you'd be full-time people?
Yes.
Eight to five or something like that, or you'd be opening?
Right, we open from eight to five.
Yeah. And, how many spots do you actually need?
To sell used cars? Probably 15 or 16.
Okay, 'cause...
Yeah, I'm not, I don't carry a large inventory. I'm a, I'm a sole proprietorship, so I buy my own cars.
Yeah, well, I have trouble seeing, seeing where you can get more than 20 spots.
Yeah, I mean...
On this...
Yeah, I mean, it's a large lot.
It's not a large lot. It's a small lot.
Well, compared to where I come from, it's a large lot. I've worked 30 years off of a corner on Knoxville, so, listen to me, I'm used to shuffling cars.
Okay. Yeah, I was over there and measured it out. And on your drawing here, you don't have any, any, anything showing for a handicap spot or any employee parkings. Like I say, we, we went through this several years ago, and we approved it for 20 spots. You know, I think that's pretty much the maximum. Do you think you'd get by with that?
I would like to see it, maybe 30 spots. And there's a handicap spot there, but I'm just trying to tell you, I want to keep in peace with...
Well, you gave us a very poor drawing. If you would come back and bring us one that shows where all 40 of those spots are gonna be, while we give it...
I drew a, I drew one drawing to scale there somewhere.
This one?
Okay, it had cars and everything parked on them.
Oh, this one here.
I mean, I did take time to have somebody do that for me. I didn't set down hand-sketch it.
I don't have that.
No.
Okay, I mean, the footage is on there and the drawings are on there. I mean, I did make an attempt to do that. I mean, we're dealing with a little short time here because I just located it, and I'm on a, moving from Peoria to East Peoria, so I'm in a hurry to get out of there too. Not in a hurry, but...
Did you find it?
Let's pass that down.
Yeah, I don't see how it's physically possible, but I haven't had a chance to look at it.
I tried to put them in there at the scale.
You don't have a drive in there.
Driveways right here.
You got no measure.
Interexes.
All I've had is this, and I measured it out. If you want to, you know, postpone this meeting or this case till next month, and we can have a chance to review it.
Not really something I'm wanting to postpone or wanting to do. It's something I need to get done.
Okay.
I'm just...
20 is the most I'm gonna be able to go for.
Can we, do what?
They'll give you 20.
20? Well, I guess we can go ahead and get to 20.
And come back?
I mean, I'm game with that.
That's all I can see getting on there. Questions? Michael?
Yeah, I see a handwritten sketch with some 20 or almost 30, but then this is, this is different. We haven't seen this. If this is done to scale, he's showing 35.
What? Sure, 30, what? Yeah, but it's not scaled. I mean, there's no measurements.
Well, I do see some measurements around, but we do see eight feet here.
Yeah, I know.
If you use this drawing here, you have no place to put a, put a drive. You'd have to have a one-lane road through there and out the other way. You wouldn't be able to have a two-way road through there.
Into the property?
Huh?
Into the property?
Right here.
Yeah.
If he goes through there, he's gotta go underneath that overhang.
No, he'd go around the back, but I'm just saying, it's a pull-through place.
We're looking at, we're looking at two different drawings, though, okay? So, and we didn't, we didn't get to see this one. Well, I don't know that it needs to be drawn up. I think we could, I think we could say you've got at least 20, and if you can come back with a drawing that works...
20, we could do that.
Let me, let me, hang on, let me, let me finish.
Do what? Yeah, do 20, get through with 20 and...
Ed, can I finish?
A real drawing that's an architect or somebody draw it up so, so we know what it looks like for sure.
Give us 20 now.
And you'll add more, lay more out with a true drawing.
You're, you're showing some additional property there.
What I'm trying to say is, let's, let's look at this from a base of 20, you know, minimum that you're gonna have. And if you can work with staff and, and come back with something that, that shows staff that you can get circulation, park more cars, then you can work that through at that level.
Yeah, I'm just saying, that drawing I gave you is kind of scale. I did have it drew by a, an architect to scale, so it should show the property and layout of the cars. I mean...
It, it does. It's got enough dimensions on here to understand it and say...
Yeah, I'm just trying to tell you, I paid a guy to do that, so...
I, I see this as a legitimate drawing.
I didn't sit down and sketch it.
It's got all the dimensions I'd put on it, and it just, just assumes that you've got eighth feet all the way along here, and you keep running. It's got an overall 145. It's got, it shows 35. I don't have an issue with that. I just wish we'd had it before we got here.
You have an issue with the car being parked in front of the garage doors?
I don't know what they are, but that's his business to figure out how to shuffle cars around. My point is, is that they're, they're organized neatly on the site, and if I went out to any other dealership, that's what I'd see. I don't think it's anything unusual.
Any comments, Ed?
We've got 11 cars there.
And staff has recommended 30. Staff has recommended 30 in their, in their recommendation. I'd feel comfortable giving them a 30, and if he could find room for five more, fine. But it looks like he's got it.
This is right. He's got 35 cars. This is right.
This is where he's showing 29 on this one.
But see, this, this has no...
See, the garage doors are right here. He's, he'd be limited to one lane going through here, out this way, and going, he'd have to make this a one-lane road.
Dino, I understand. My point is, my point is, is you're working off the wrong drawing.
Right.
Well, we haven't been extended that till tonight. We haven't, I haven't intended to look at it.
Absolutely, but now...
So, if we're gonna go by this, we're gonna have to postpone it till next meeting, so we got a chance to...
Give him 20.
I, I'm inclined to give him the 30 that staff recommends, because I think he's, he's close to it.
Okay, what'd you call, Dave? You want to go for 20 or 30?
You know what I'm wanting, but what can I get today?
Well, my vote's a no, so whatever you want to do.
So, you the only voter? We gotta vote the rest of them?
That's right. You gotta get four votes.
I'm just curious. I mean, I don't want no hard feelings or nothing. I just like to get it down and...
We're asking you, what do you want?
You know, going about trying to get a business started here.
Paul, can you get a business started with 20 cars?
Ty, what do you, what do you want to carry on the council?
Let's just do it with 20.
I will take whatever the majority votes.
They can go back and...
As ever diplomatic. All right, we can vote once on 20 and once on 30.
Yeah.
Well, he's gonna say no, he's got no vote. So, why, why go through the...
Because he says no, we might get four yeses right here.
We say four?
Yeah.
Five?
Four.
One?
According to this drawing, you're, you're blocking off the, the entrance to Main Street. Is that what you want to do? There's no way to get a car through there.
Yeah, there is. It's true to scale.
Block five cars off that drawing. You get to 30, and there's plenty of room to go in and out of that.
Now, there's a driveway in there.
You wanna do 30, then...
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Anyone here to speak for or against the petitioner? Hearing none. We'll go into deliberations. Does anybody need a break?
No.
There you go, you missed the game. Okay.
What is wrong with you? No, it's not mine. I think it's Dino's.
Oops. Case 20, PUD1 petition to modify the existing planned unit development at 115 Arnold Avenue with the establishment, maintenance, and operation of the proposed special use permit be detrimental to or endanger public health, safety, morals, or comfort of the general welfare.
No.
Will the proposed special use permit be dangerous to the use and enjoyment of the properties in the immediate vicinity for uses permitted in the district?
No.
No.
Will the proposed special use permit diminish or impair property values within the surrounding neighborhood?
No.
Will the establishment of the special use permit MP the orderly development or improvement of surrounding properties for uses permitted in the subject zoning district? Or have adequate roads, drainage, or other necessary facilities been provided?
Yes.
Yes. Or have adequate measures been taken to provide ingress and egress to the site, minimizing congestion and hazards on the public streets?
Yes.
Will the proposed special use permit conform to other applicable regulations of the zoning district?
Not really, but yes.
So, just a mention to the board. So, this is a bit of a unique situation, and it's not your traditional special use. This is a planned unit development. It's unusually applied here. The typically planned unit developments are for where you have disparate uses put together. You know, you have, Eastport Marine is a good example. You have commercial uses and residential kind of intermixed together. This is a, a standing planned unit development. It has presented some challenges to the current property owner, and so one of the things that staff recommended here is maybe some additional potential uses that would be low-impact, but something that might open the door for a little broader opportunity for the petitioner that somewhere down the road, if she decides to sell the property, isn't so limited in, to what it can be used for. Originally, this was a builder's workshop, so it's always kind of followed in that vein. I think the, the dog grooming facility is one that the staff is comfortable with, and then we had a couple of others identified in here. And so, the recommendation here may include these, it may not, and that's certainly up to the board here, if you don't feel like any other uses. But the thought was, is to add some additional uses that would provide some additional flexibility down the road, because the PUD is very inflexible in its usage. If there were, this is a bigger property, and there were other buildings to be put on the property, it would require the, the property owner to come back to the, the ZBA. So, the thought is, is a little bit of flexibility here might be helpful down the road. But that's the group's call, but I wanted to make sure you're aware of that this is kind of a unique application. Yes?
My thought here would be to, and I'll, I'll move to do this, but to just do it for the dog grooming, because I see the antique shop and the doctor's office requiring considerably more parking than the dog grooming or...
Sure.
The, the agency would. So, that's, that's kind of where I'd go with that.
And, and this situation may change should the property adjacent to it become commercial. You know, right now, this property is a little bit isolated, and that's why it has this PUD designation from 40 years ago. The property between this and the hair salon or the barber shop and the insurance agency, if this were to, that property were to change over to commercial, then this property would no longer have a lot of these challenges. But given that its current situation, it's pretty limited in its potential use, and reasonably so, because you have neighbors on both sides.
Dog grooming and related retail sales.
So, we have a motion from Mr. McCarthy for the...
Yeah, I'd move to approve the request for special use permit for dog grooming only at this location.
I'll second that.
Related retail sales.
Well, and related retail sales, yes. Thank you, Ed. So, for dog grooming and related retail sales.
And Gina seconded it.
Yep.
Ready for roll call?
Yeah, ready.
Dino Ori?
Yes.
Belinda Young?
Yes.
Ed Zoski?
Yes.
Mike McCarthy?
Yes.
Gina Driscoll?
Yes.
All those waiting in favor? Gina?
I did.
I'll introduce you later.
Okay, moving to case 20 SU2 and case 20 SU3, petition of Roy Source for special use for cannabis infusion operation and cannabis... cannabis infusion operation and cannabis craft growing operations at 3201 North Main Street. And same thing, will the established maintenance and operation proposed special use permit be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, morals, comforts, or general welfare?
No.
No?
No.
Okay, will the special use permit be injurious to the uses and enjoyments of other properties in the immediate vicinity for uses permitted in the district?
No.
Will the proposed special use diminish or impair property values within the surrounding areas?
No.
Will the establishment of the special use permit impede the orderly development or improvement of surrounding properties for uses permitted in the subject zoning district?
No.
No.
No. Or have adequate roads, drainage, and other facilities been provided? Yes.
Yes.
Or have adequate measures been taken to provide ingress and egress to the site minimizing traffic congestion? Yes. Will the proposed special use permit conform to other applicable regulations zoning district?
Yes.
And we're looking for a motion to allow him to do this, staying 1,000 feet away, right? Anybody got a question? Who wants to make the motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the, the petition, subject to it being 1,000 feet, and Mr. Source can show us how he gets that measurement of 1,000 feet.
And subject to getting the state licenses?
Well, we can approve it whether he gets state licenses or not. And that's what we're doing.
I'll second that.
Make sure I have that clear. So we're approving for the 1,000-foot separation.
And Mr. Source, he will present to staff how he gets to that 1,000 feet.
Okay.
And do the same on both, right?
Yeah, I don't know that we have to have them separately, or you can do them separately if you want, but they were presented together and...
Yeah.
Together.
Together's fine.
Together, or you want me to read you off the next one?
I think together's fine, and then we can...
Well, we have them, we have them both on the same sheet right now.
Yeah, we don't have a separate sheet for it anyway.
Ready for roll call vote?
Yeah.
Dino Ori?
Yes.
Belinda Young?
Yes.
Ed Zaski?
Yes.
Mike McCarthy?
Yes.
Gina Driscoll?
Yes.
All voting in favor.
of adult cannabis dispensary located at 504 Riverside Drive. Same readings, will the establishment, maintenance, and operation proposed special use permit be detrimental to or endanger public health, safety, morals, comforts, or general welfare?
No.
No.
Will the proposed special use be injurious to the use or enjoyment of other properties in the vicinity for uses permitted in the district?
No.
Will the proposed special use permit diminish or impair property values within the surrounding neighborhoods?
No.
Will the establishment, maintenance, establishment of the proposed special use permit impede the orderly development or improvements of surrounding properties for uses permitted in the subject zoning district?
No.
No.
Or have adequate utilities, access roads, drainage, or other necessary facilities been provided? Yes.
Yes.
Or have adequate measures been taken to provide ingress and egress to the site minimizing traffic congestion and hazards? Yes.
Yes.
Will the special use permit conform to other applicable regulations of the zoning district?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion to approve. Or motion?
I'll make it. Approve it. I'll second that.
Go ahead.
Dino Ori?
Yes.
Belinda Young?
Yes.
Ed Zaski?
Yes.
Mike McCarthy?
Yes.
Gina Driscoll?
Yes.
Case 20SU5, petition of Dave Horton of Dave's Garage for special use to allow for the outdoor display and sale of vehicles, trailers, and other automotive repair, or , and automotive repair business at 727 North Main. And same thing, will the establishment, maintenance, and operation of proposed special use permit be detrimental to or endanger public health, safety, morals, comforts, or general welfare?
No.
No.
Will the proposed special use permit be injurious to the uses or enjoyments of other properties in the immediate vicinity for uses permitted in the district?
No.
Will the special use permit diminish or impair property value within the surrounding neighborhoods?
No.
Will the establishment, maintenance, of proposed special use permit impede the orderly development or improvements of surrounding properties for uses and the uses permitted in the subject zoning district?
No.
No.
Or have adequate utilities, access roads, drainage, or other necessary facilities been provided?
Yes.
Or have adequate measures been taken to provide ingress and egress to the site minimizing traffic congestion and hazards on public streets?
Yes.
With the proposed special use conform to all other applicable regulations of zoning district?
Yes.
Yes.
Before we vote on this, can I make a comment? Oftentimes, we get...
Is there a discussion, or does somebody want to make a motion?
Mike's discussing.
I'll make a motion to approve it for 30 spaces, and I want to point out to, to my colleagues here that oftentimes, we get sketches that are meaningless, and we ask the petitioners to go back and give us something to mention, and although we didn't have it in our original packet, Mr. Livingston did find it and submit it to us. To address your concern on, on the ingress and egress, I'm suggesting 30 spaces on this and the elimination of five to allow for easy ingress and egress at that point. So my motion would be to approve it for 30 spaces with the deletion of five as shown on the site plan at the entrance.
I'll second that motion.
Call the row when you're ready.
Dino Ori?
No.
Belinda Young?
Yes.
Ed Zaski?
Yes.
Mike McCarthy?
Yes.
Gina Driscoll?
Yes.
Four voting aye, one nay.
Recyclables. I'll second that.
All right, that's football.
Thank you, everybody, for coming out. Thank you.
Oops. Thank you.